Okay, and call me in order with everyone to stand. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation, under God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ding, overall place.
Butler?
Here.
Lipscomb?
Here.
Merson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Thrasch?
Here.
Vincenzo?
Here.
West?
Here.
Okay, like we want to everybody that's in the house this evening and welcome our new council people. The first thing that we're gonna do tonight, since we have new council people elected, even though Mike was re-elected and the other two were elected, they will have to be sworn in tonight at tonight's meeting. So prior to the meeting, we will do that and I would ask everyone to please stand. Back here.
Where do you want us to go?
Okay, it looks good.
This, this wraps up.
Okay.
Don't start. You can do it.
I'm a little slow.
That's alright. So am I. Okay, I'm gonna read it to you. As I read this to you, follow along with me and we'll go from there. I state your name, Lucian Merson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, that I will uphold the Charter and all laws of the City of St. Clairsville, Ohio, and that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of that office as a councilperson for the City of St. Clairsville during the continuance of my office. If you do, say "I do."
I do.
Okay, congratulations. Thank you. Welcome aboard officially. Get your signatures on here and Tony will voterize your signatures and then you can post your copies and they'll all be signed. So, welcome to the.
You know, when we were teaching, had a young senior person come up and picked it up in my lap. He took it down to the register office and they called up.
I've been questioning this whole thing about the evening.
It's not checking my address.
Tony is, but that's why Tony is here.
Years and years of taking notes. We did have a good hand, the legislature.
The mayor did it before.
And are you alright?
I don't have anybody's name.
These are today.
I didn't find them all day.
That's good. Thanks.
We discussed that. Technically, you can't.
If you didn't read that on the first.
Not in there, but the mayor, the mayor terminated December 31st, but. That's why I said, I got nobody to ask yet. Mine, Ness. I'm not sure about Ness being there. I mean, the charter has it where he can, he can be the one that gets the mayor's incapacitating. But being the first one to hear, so she is.
Watch your seat. Let me hold your chair for you.
It's only yet here. I got no one to ask.
Okay, officially, Tony's gonna make copies of those for the three of them. The next thing we need to take care of at this point in time, the previous pro temp, president pro temp of council was Beth Oprah. She did not run, so right now we do not have a president pro temp. Everybody knows that's the person that runs the meetings in case of the absence of the council president. So, does council wish to make a motion for anybody?
I'd like to make a motion for Mike Smith, being the president pro temp.
Okay, we have a motion and we need a second. Okay, roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Merson?
Yes.
Smith?
I'm staying.
Thrasch?
Yes.
Vincenzo?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Six in favor of Smith.
Okay, Mr. Smith has been voted as a council president.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure you put your time down.
Okay, next on the agenda is the council minutes from the December 18th meeting. Has everyone on council received their copy of the minutes from the 18th? And do they have any questions? Everyone has received them. Anyone have any questions? So at this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as a. Okay, we'll need a roll call vote to accept the minutes from the 18th meeting.
Butler?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Merson?
Yep.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
Vincenzo?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Okay, the minutes have been approved and they are the minutes of record. Okay, other than that, we have nothing else on the agenda prior to the reports. The mayor unfortunately is COVID. She's not here this evening, so we'll move directly to Service Director Jeremy Greenwood.
Good evening, council. Sure and sweet. Council items before us tonight, 2024-01, inter-funds transfer. We believe we're asking for emergency for that so that we can actually get the funds transferred into these other departments to get things going. Waterline breaks for the year. Last year, we had 53 total. I went over this in utility. 26 caused by the water distribution project, one from the I-70 project, and 26 others from the city for a total of 53. And we've changed out 277 nodes for the year so far. The nodes are the little reporters that work the water meter readings too. Their batteries are starting to die on them. They've been dying for what, the last four years now? So we're constantly just replacing them. Water distribution projects move online, moving. The west end waterline project's also moving. The high EPA backup generator grant that we got, the generators in and installed on the concrete pad, although it's backwards, so we'll get it flipped around and get that hooked up and get that switched. And then we also closed last week on the Calipare property at the south end of the bike trail. Leaf pickup, we're still doing bagged leaf pickup. Anybody that has bags needs to call the city building and give us their address and we can come out and pick them up. Pretty much everything else is the same as before. We're waiting on a whole bunch of equipment for things and departments are pretty much all going the same thing. Obviously, about the only big difference would be there is the chance of snow this weekend. I know the S-word. There is emergency legislation that there's no on-street parking when that's going on. If it's a, what is it? It's two inches? So, just keep that in mind for the public. Other than that, that's about everything that's going on so far.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Does anyone have any questions? KC?
Spring Street, do we get that fixed?
Spring is the one down, yeah, I do believe he went down and looked, but I'll have to check with him and see.
And the flagpole, do we get the tree? Done. Got it.
That's what I think, I think I remember him saying that, but I don't remember the lot.
Right. Yeah, on the property of the bike share, how much do we pay for that? Approximately, that, I don't even.
We are responsible for $1,000, or $13,822 out of the total of $41,465.
Okay, and is that gonna be open to the public after?
Yes.
What would that take place, you think?
As soon as we can get the trails up and running, but the way things are going, it'll be a while.
Okay.
Yeah, just wondering again if we'd be able to get a list of vehicles, you know, the year, mileage, and the model. I have the report that you gave last year on the vehicles and I knew in the last meeting, we questioned on the finance budget, the 100,000 for sewer trucks, and then you were saying it'll be a dump truck.
Yeah.
Now, on this old list from last year, we're showing that we have six dump trucks. Three up for the street and two for the sewer.
Various different sizes. The problem that we have now is with the mini excavator we've got in the trailer, it's gross overweight now with the trucks that we have and we're basically killing the transmission. So, we've got smaller dump trucks and what we need is a bigger one. So, I'm not saying there's not the possibility of getting rid of one of the smaller ones once we get the bigger one. It's just one of those things that we're still been trying to look back and forth and see what's going on.
So, do we still have the 2000 International, which was for the street?
The street has the two, big two Internationals. They use those for major snowplowing and major excavation going through. The other problem we have with that is we need somebody with CDL, Class A, that can drive. We don't have a lot of guys that have that.
Okay, and then we have three 2016 and four 350s.
The 350s, we're just gonna.
So, right now, we have two 550s.
Uh, yes.
One, a 350.
We have, we have, I'll have to look at the list, but I do believe the two 550s are in the street department. We use those for snowplowing and salting going through, and when those are in use, we can't use them with sewer guys with that, the back and forth.
But we still do have the three Internationals.
Yes.
And don't we have a new, a new big dump truck?
No, never had a dump truck. We got pickups last year.
Okay.
Now, what we're trying to do is to fix the leaf truck so that when the leaf truck comes back, we've got that, and then we can take one of the big dump trucks and take it back down to the sewer plant. But the problem is still, I don't have anybody with the Class A CDL except for the superintendent. So, one of those issues of actually being able to drive it.
Okay, I mean, that's all I have.
KC, question?
Dump truck, Class A or Class B?
Depends on the size. Everything's a size. Now, once, once it gets above a certain weight with the trailer and the load on the trailer is when it kicks up.
Who will drive? If you get a new one, who?
The 550? We don't need a CDL to drive the 550. Anybody can drive a 550.
How many Class B CDLs do we have in the city? I thought Class A was 28,000 pounds over and air brakes.
I have to look and see what we've got. We've got a mix of back and forth, but most of the, most of the guys down there do not have their CDLs now, which used to be an actual requirement of the job, but when the federal government got involved and then made it mandatory that you had to go to five weeks of school to actually get your CDL, it kind of hurt anybody just trying to get a CDL and going through it. So, what we've been trying to do is ODOT has a program where they're doing it online, where the people can go through the classwork online, and then we just have to try and find someplace to send them to do the driver's portion, but they have to get to the online class first.
And there was nothing in the contract about having the CDL?
It used to be a requirement, but it's one of those things that, you know, most people don't have anymore. Now, the electric guys, it's part of their training, so all the electric guys have that coming through. Can't pull the electric guys out and do other departments work and the back and forth.
Any other questions?
Well, do you have any workers that are interested in wanting to do those classes?
Yeah, but then the problem is still the same thing. If you're sending them to school for five weeks, we're paying their salary and go to school and further school, and then we still have to have somebody in to do the work that while they're gone at school and going through it. So, it's not, it's a balancing act. It's been back and forth. You used to be able to just go take your CDL permit test and then after so many hours of driving, which we could have done in-house, you go up and take the test and you either pass or fail or whatever and go through it. Now, with the federal requirements, they've mixed up too much of the over-the-road truckers with some of the people like what we need just for somebody hauling around stuff in here. Now, technically, we get away with it because it's the same thing like the fire, fire department. I was driving the fire truck, which I should have had a CDL for, but as it, because it was for an emergency situation, that's a forgiveness. It's a very thin gray line with that going through it, and if something would happen, and let's just say an accident, one of our trucks hits somebody, somebody gets hurt, something, the lawyers get involved, and then it's just, I don't know. So, it's better to be safe on things like that, but what ends up happening, I don't know. If anybody knows anybody up at the, at the federal level for the Federal Transportation Board, please convey the hamperings that they've put on all of us with this.
If I might add, anytime we cross the state line, we have to have Class A's. And we have to take equipment across there to get it repaired.
Yeah, it takes stuff.
Cars, etc. So.
Pumps and different.
Pulls up our primary people.
So, it's not fun, but it's a balancing act.
Any other questions for the service director? Okay, thank you, Jeremy.
Welcome.
Move on to Police Chief.
Okay. Good evening, council. Happy New Year. Our year-end report for 2023, we handled 5,240 calls and complaints. We had four SWAT team callouts, 117 crashes, 358 arrests, 33 warrants, 44 domestics, and 1,402 traffic stops. Everybody's in good healthy shape. Officer Porter is still on family leave with his new baby daughter, and she's a, had her baby stopped and showed her off to us last week. Everything's going real good.
Anybody have any questions for the chief?
I have one question, and I, I had a resident message me about a vehicle on, at 202 Sunset. Did you get a call? I told, I told them to call you. She said she was gonna try to get ahold of you. It's been sitting there for over two weeks, front end smashed in, not dry to boot, it was towed there and left, and with the snow emergency coming. I believe it's my dad whose car it is. If I can talk to you later.
Okay, I'll write down the address.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, Matt. Move on to Finance Director Annette Welton.
Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome Lucian and Holly to the team. Congratulations. And I just want to say thanks to the team that I work with. We have a really good year again. And I have Dana, Matt, Tom, Anita, Dawn, and Jeremy with the day shift team, and there's just, there's a lot of work that goes on in here today. You just can't even begin to imagine how crazy it gets. But we have a really good team here and just want to thank everyone. And then the legislation, this is the one that comes every January, usually the 14th, as part of the budget where we transfer money from the general fund to the rec center to the police department, street department, because they operate from the general fund. That's all I have.
Thank you, Annette. Does anyone have any questions?
Does this thing pass tonight? I don't remember this last year. We do this every year. If we did the temporary budget, why are we transferring money so soon?
We have to do it. It's part of the budget, actually, so they can operate.
But we already did that with the temporary, don't you think?
Yeah, but we have to do the transfer of the funds every year. Every January, we do it. Usually the first piece in January.
So, okay, so we're transferring 550,000 from the general fund to the street fund. The 550, what would that be for?
That's just for operations because they don't really, like the street fund has, the only income they get is from gas tax, motor vehicle tax. They don't really have generated.
They're not enterprise funds. But we already have 959,000 from the temporary budget.
This is just the transfers for the whole year. This will take care of the permanent budget too.
Okay, then we're transferring the same fund to the parks and wrecks, which is 2041. We already have close to 300,000 there. We're gonna put another 150 in, and then we're also gonna transfer same fund to police, I believe.
Yeah, I think those are the same ones as last year.
Okay, we can talk about that. Fine, just maybe give us an education as to follow the initiative.
We have, we do it every year. Like I said, we're a piece of legislation that comes out.
Okay, Tony.
Any other questions for Annette? Okay, thank you, Annette. Move on to Planning and Zoning Administrator, Mr. Murphy.
Thanks, Jim. Just to let council know, big news on the Trinity St. Clairsville Neighborhood Hospital. Builder has been in contact with the city over the last two weeks. They are finalizing things right now. We did issue a demolition permit for the metal portion of the old Napa building that's there, so they can proceed forward on demolition of that building at any time. The masonry building that's there will remain and plan on using that, at least at this point in time. Chain Engineering, uh, let's see, yeah, Chain Engineering, they're reviewing the stone water management plan that was sent to the city last week. They have done a preliminary review months ago, but double checking to see if there were any changes. That stone water quality board will be meeting soon, and Dawn, you are on that board, so I'll be getting ahold, getting ahold of you when we do. Their goals to start the project overall in the spring. So, great news there for the city and the county. As we've discussed in previous meetings, this project, when complete, will provide about 100 jobs according to Trinity and a brand-new state-of-the-art building. I was kind of looking back at some of the recent history of the city to see when there was maybe a development project of this impact and providing this many jobs, and it was probably when Plaza West was constructed, which was about 40 years ago. So, that's a great news right there. Let's see here, there's a three-and-a-half acre parcel to the east. It's clear right now. It's ready for development, so hopefully the owner will either develop that property or part with it. But again, it's a great thing for the city. We frequently talk about keeping young people here and, and providing jobs for them, so this is kind of a good first step in doing that with the masonry building that exists there and the vacant parcel to the east. Hopefully, we can, apart with that property, develop it, get some other things moving, moving along. Jobs always create new jobs. So, on other matters, Planning Commission is set up to meet next week. I'll let Christie talk about that. One thing I am gonna do is we just have some very rough drafts, I'll say, of possible temporary seasonal business guidelines, food guide, drug guidelines. We're not advocating one way or the other for them. It's just to kind of create discussion. So, I'll send that to all council members. If you want to reply, you can, and you can come to the meeting too. So, again, we're not advocating, we're just trying to get some discussion going on that. But all are welcome to attend that meeting. For zoning appeals, they will be meeting Thursday, January 18th at 6:00 PM. The Belmont Zen Center is requesting approval for additional useful home occupation at 120 North Market Street. James Casebolt lives at this address and is requesting to establish a religious meeting space for the center. All are welcome to attend that meeting. If you have questions, you can ask me now. Contact me later on too, so.
Wait, what's that address?
120 North Market, just down the street from you.
On the left-hand side?
Yeah. Yeah, so you might have questions, feel free to ask them and.
He wants to conduct what there?
Uh, he owns what's called the Belmont Zen Center, which is, I guess, a meditation, kind of like a religious type of thing, but he wants to establish a religious meeting space for that Belmont Zen Center.
And Jim Casebolt, you said?
Uh, yes, James Casebolt.
Now he will.
But, yeah, feel free to ask me any questions. If you're not sure at this point, just give me a call and we'll go back.
One question, just information for you. How many bed hospital is Trinity St. Clairsville?
My understanding is it's six beds.
Six beds?
Yeah, and they do, I mean, it'd be great to see them do something bigger than that. Maybe that is their long-term plan, because they do have a space in that masonry structure that will remain, and then they do have vacant space behind where the park and the new building will be built that, that'll top a little bit. I don't know how serious it is about potentially another building.
KC?
Are they starting anything up on top of the hill there? I've seen surveys up there. I didn't know if they, I didn't do, on top of the hill?
Talking Honda direct?
Yes.
No. Though they're still working with ODOT on egress and ingress, so we have started to identify where our utilities are in the area, but that's about it so far.
Any other questions for Tony? Okay, thank you, John. We'll now move on to council committees. Mr. Vincenzo, Finance?
No report.
I did want to comment about the ordinance too, so Mike was asking about that. I don't have an option to put on like temporary revenue. My whole revenue for the whole year has to go on one time, so this is part of the full revenue for the year. There's no temporary revenue. So, this is part of their revenue for the year.
You talking about revenue that the Otter certifies?
Uh, yes.
Okay. But I can't just put on like three months of the revenue. Half of the whole revenue for the whole year, and this is part of these department revenues.
Okay, Utilities, Tara?
Yeah, we had a meeting tonight. We went over the billing report and collections, had a couple other questions, and then had a waterline review. Next meeting is February the 5th, 6:15.
Actually, the 16th, because it's a holiday.
Utility, utility.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm thinking the next meeting. I misunderstood.
No.
It'd be...
It'll be the 15th.
Good, yeah. My mistake, I was thinking the next meeting. Okay, Police, may next, Mike, you have a report?
I have no report, but if it's okay with the Police Chief, if we can have a, we usually meet after the 30, Monday meeting. You said that day was the 16th?
Yeah, the, the next meeting, I can't worry, 16th rather than 15th because of...
The holiday.
The holiday on Monday, so we'll be back...
Another Tuesday.
Another Tuesday instead of Monday.
Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. All right, we'll have the meeting on February, or January 16th.
Okay, Street Department, North Side, Tara?
No report.
No report. Streets South Side, JC?
No report.
Safety, JC?
No report.
Billion Grounds, Dawn?
Uh, no report.
Planning Commission, Christie?
The Planning Commission will meet next Monday here in, either in council chambers or in the room, um, at 6:00 PM. We will be discussing, um, some proposed amendments, um, to the Planning and Zoning Code regarding temporary seasonal businesses and mobile food truck units. I do have those, um, proposed changes that, um, Tom was kind enough to kind of do a lot of research and, and come up with at the request of the committee. So we're gonna discuss those changes. I don't know if anything, um, permanent, will there be like a formal recommendation after this meeting on the 8th, or is it kind of just discussion?
Right, at this point in time, it would just be discussion, but my hope would be that we have enough guidance so we can just draw up a potential section of code that would then be formalized before the Planning Commission, you know, following what our code ORC requires instead of the actual public hearing that would require a notice in the newspapers. Then the next step would be the Planning Commission's recommendation to City Council, and then City Council will have their hearing on that matter, too.
So we're kind of hoping that people from the community, business owners and whatnot would attend that meeting to voice, you know, their opinions. Council members?
It's this Monday coming, right?
Yes.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock. The 8th, January 8th, six o'clock. And Tom can forward those proposals. I have them, I can forward them.
I'd like to see them, just because I'm in the food industry.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and I'll send them out tomorrow morning. That's, I have it on my calendar to do that.
Okay.
Feel free to call me with any questions or...
You're gonna send them to all of us?
Yeah, when I have, I'll use your city emails.
Yep.
That's where you get, I'll get it at. Um, if you haven't received it for some reason, call me right away, and if you want to sit down with me at the review, certainly, or you can reply to the emails.
Thank you. Yeah, Tom's obviously put a lot of work into it, so it's, it's, um, it's a lot of information on there, so. And that's, that's it, that's all I have to report next on that.
Anybody have any questions for Christie on that? Okay, Fire District, Mr. Smith?
Um, since I'm here to that board, the committee, I don't have any report. I'm not sure when they meet. I was looking at these, um, papers you sent out, there's no time. Do you know when they normally meet?
They were going to, my understanding was, it would be that once you were appointed to that committee, or whoever was appointed, they would get them to conduct a meeting at a time, so, uh, just contact, uh, the Fire Chief and they can get with the other members of the board and find out when they want to, for everybody to be there, because the three board members from the Fire District do vote. So there is actual decisions made by that board, so, you know...
Mike, what's the, your cell phone? Is it still the old one, or is it the...
Uh, 740-310-4247.
I'm sending him Tim Hall's number right now.
That's just where I was going.
I got it.
Meet you today.
I am.
Yeah, just give, just give Tim a call. I, right into a better day, but I didn't get a chance to talk to him, we were kind of like in a hurry.
I just talked to him today.
Yeah, contact him and, uh, get together and set up what day that they want to, if there's gonna be a regular time, they may even set a regular time for the, for the Fire Board. All right. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, direct appointments. Christie?
A lot to report tonight, other than, um, they are very busy. All the winter sports are started and underway. Um, the next meeting will be Thursday, January 18th at 4:30 at the Rec Center.
13th, January 18th?
Yes, 4:30 PM.
Okay, any other questions for Christie on the Rec Center? Planning Park District, which, uh, Lucian's the...
Obviously, I don't have a report.
So, um, you probably would need to get with them and find out when they're gonna have their meetings and, uh, kind of get involved with them, and, uh, I, I'm sure the park itself is closed, but they still do have meetings and things that they're going to do, so, uh...
We can have the... We have the one lady, what's the...
Katie Baggs.
Katie. I don't have her number. If you have it, you can send it to her. I don't have that number, but...
I think I have.
We could make her Assistant Clerk of Council, so that she...
I already have it.
I don't have her number.
It's your timeline.
Um, you can, or, so, just, just want to write it down.
I'll call them out.
That's for the park.
Okay. 288-39? One question, Mike brought up to me, and, uh, I kind of glanced at it and didn't pursue it because of the way I read it. With this being the organizational meeting, uh, it's at the organizational meeting, the council also appoints a clerk of council. Uh, as I, as I read this section, that it says council may fill any vacancy in the office of clerk of council. Since we only have one person and he's not vacant, uh, technically, I'm not even positive that he would have to be, it's just a vote, motion and a vote, but if you would like to give him a vote of confidence, uh, someone would like to entertain a motion to have Jacob continue as clerk of council?
I would make that motion that Jacob DeBertin continue as our council clerk and thank him for his excellent service this last year.
Amen to that.
Second, Tara?
Butler?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Merson?
Yep.
Smith?
Yep.
Frash?
Yep.
Hey? Vincentza?
Yeah.
Okay. And West?
Yes. How come you hesitated on me?
Still scared from JC drawing, sir.
She cares.
Okay, Dick has been reappointed, uh, at the organizational meeting, so he will be the clerk of council until he gets tired of us at the next organizational meeting, and so he's not gonna be around anymore, which I hope is not for a very long time, because he makes my job a lot easier. Thank you, Jacob, I appreciate it. Okay, uh, the last item at this time is ordinance resolutions. We have one ordinance, ordinance number 202401. This is an ordinance to make inter-fund transfers for the normal expenses of any other, or any other expenditures of the city, the state of Ohio, for the period of January 1, 2024 to Jan, December 31st, 2024, and this is containing emergency legislation. So does anyone wish to, uh, that's Jacob do the first reading?
Ordinance number 202401, an ordinance to make inter-fund transfers for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio, for the period of January 1, 2024, through December 31st, 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, so this does conduct, or contain, uh, emergency language. Does anybody wish to take any further action?
Yeah, I'm sure that the rule is requiring ordinances or resolutions to be read on three separate readings, be suspended, and declaring an emergency.
Throw that motion, second?
JC.
JC, okay, we'll take a roll call vote to determine whether or not council wants to consider this emergency legislation.
Butler?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Merson?
Yep.
Smith?
Yes.
Frash?
Yes.
Vincentzo?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
All members are there.
Okay, this will be considered emergency legislation, so Jacob will read it for the final reading.
Ordinance number 202401, an ordinance to make inter-fund transfers for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio, for the period of January 1, 2024, through December 31st, 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to vote on the legislation.
Yes, sir.
The second, JC, take a roll call vote to pass the...
Butler?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Merson?
Yep.
Smith?
Yes.
Frash?
Yes.
Vincentzo?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
All members on the table, they should hear.
Okay, ordinance 202401 has been passed. That's the last thing on the agenda this evening. Again, the next council meeting, because of a holiday, will be on Tuesday, January 16th, uh, here in the city building at seven o'clock. Anyone have any comments? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.